And then Irene, when you're done, I'm going to change it to picture and picture so they can see the mic.
Okay.
Linda, are we good?
Technology, technology. Will it work or won't it work?
Well, why don't we come on this quick?
You want me to turn it off, try again?
No, because then that'll just...
That'll cancel the...
Log it all up again.
It's recording, but it chances are it's recording, it's just not live.
That's gonna be a problem, right? Because we got lots of people who have been asking all day about this.
Do you want to call Alex?
He never answers when I call him. Maybe he'll answer you if you call him.
It's not on there.
Uh, keep waiting.
Somebody?
Last time he had to do something for me and then turn it off and turn it back on again, so. We're just recording.
Okay.
Please note that to the public, um, so that they can send the text to the staff.
Tomorrow.
Okay. All right, so, good evening, everyone. This is our Town of East Hattam Public Hearing. We're here at the municipal office complex and meeting's running two and we start at 7:03. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Education are holding a public hearing to present and discuss the current status of the East Hattam School, Elementary School HVAC project and the East Hattam High School Athletic Complex. Representatives from HF Lens and Airtemp, the Board of Education and Facility Staff will be providing a presentation and answering questions from the public. All residents of the Town of East Hattam are obviously welcome. For more information, contact the Selectmen's Office at 860-873-5021. Written comments and questions can also be sent to the First Selectman at admin@easthattam.org. Dated today, the 26th of September, 2024. I'm gonna turn it right over to the Board of Ed and they will take it away.
Okay, I think I'm gonna start. Hello, my name is Joe Spurgeon. I am the Chairman of the Board of Ed's Capital Improvement Committee, AKA the Building Committee, but our technical term is Capital Improvement Committee. This project was assigned to us back in January of 2022, and that was assigned to us by the Long-Term Capital Improvement Committee, which is a townwide group that, a committee that identifies priorities for capital expenses for both the town and the Board of Ed. So the HVAC project at the schools was identified primarily for three purposes. The age of our systems, the amount of maintenance and corrective costs that were being spent on the systems, and the fact that we have failing systems. Late in winter, spring 2022, this project was assigned to my committee, to our committee, the VOA Capital Improvement Committee. In fall of '22, we completed an RFQ, request for quotes, and we contracted with HF Lens. Scott Kranek from HF Lens is here with us this evening. Scott and his firm conducted a district-wide HVAC assessment and recommendation project for us. Also in the fall of 2022, the State of Connecticut announced an indoor air quality grant program. In November, Lens, HF Lens did complete their initial assessment and identified immediate needs for the district. Those included the HVAC system at the elementary school, which really needs an entire upgrade, and replacement of the chiller at the high school. In November of 2022, through December of 2022, we had independent professional project, cross-project completed. And then, from there, we did apply for the state grant. Yeah, that would help a lot.
Sure.
So from there, we did apply for the state grant. We initially did not get the initial state grant, but the state did offer a second round of grants, which we also applied for and were granted. In December of 2022, we, the district applied for, sorry, December of 2023, district reapplied for a second grant, and we were granted that, announced in May 2024. And as of the summer of 2024, we've been working with both HF Lens and Airtemp, who responded to the RFQ for services for the HVAC projects at both the elementary school and the high school. Sorry, I was a little scattered there. I was looking through a few sets of notes. So with that, we're gonna turn that over to Scott Kranek, who will kind of walk through the project and where we are, and then we can address questions at the end.
Cool. Thank you, everyone. Scott Kranek, I am a project engineer with HF Lens. As Joe had noted, we've been on board for approximately just over two years. Now, looking at the district-wide facilities here in relation to indoor air quality and HVAC. Through the process, we did make two immediate recommendations for upgrade based on the existing conditions of the facilities, and that was the elementary school as well as the high school chiller. With those two items, that became the core of the grant cycle and ultimately was awarded. So, just gonna look at what the existing systems and how we came to this conclusion in regards to the elementary school. The elementary school has unit ventilators in each of the classroom. The unit ventilators are at end of useful life. Right now, what they do is they bring outside air into the space, and then they either use refrigerant conditioning or they use the heating hot water from the boiler to temper the space. But those are at end of useful life. The controls that control the actual actuators that modulate how much outside air, they're at end of useful life. Parts are no longer readily available, as well as the staff capable of being trained. The technology has moved on to electric-driven actuators, so... All of that, coupled with the compressors outside of each classroom, the compressors are short cycling. They provide controllability issues, so from an air conditioning standpoint, also see issues with the systems as well. The high school, that had one major piece of equipment that was at end of useful life, and that was the air-cooled chiller. The air-cooled chiller is out back of the high school. It provides the cooling capacity that then provides cooling to the air-hailing units for the spaces. That's a legacy item, again, another piece of equipment that... It has not failed, however, I don't see how it continues to operate. It's at, it's at the end. So definitely another item that was high on the list. So those were the functionality of the equipment of, at each of the schools and why they became the high priority items in regards to our review of all three schools, really. We looked at the elementary school, the middle school, as well as the high school. Put together a priority list for each of the schools, and then we also prioritize that by the district. So some items at each school were higher on the list, but these were the two items that were the most stringent and most immediate needs. So just looking at the elementary school and kind of explaining how each of the systems function at the school. For heating, like I noted, that comes from unit ventilators. The hot water boiler system provides hot, heating hot water to those units. However, those units are loud, end of useful life, very noisy. We see this in, in multiple districts where the noise, the teachers turn them off, they don't use them, you don't have the outside air. If they're not functioning correctly, to begin with, with heating, cooling, and ventilation, and then they get turned off because of noise, it just further propagates the temperament as well as the outside air within the class, classroom. Cooling is by the compressors. Each classroom has a compressor outside, and it feeds a unit ventilator. There are some classrooms in the one wing by the gym that utilizes window units, residential-style units. They do not have compressors, so inefficient. And, you know, just like your house, they're, they're controlled in the window. Um, fresh air, currently, fresh air comes in through the unit ventilator. It's conditioned to a temperature for the space, and then exhaust fans pull that air out of the building. So the heat that you've just heated that air to goes right out the building without any energy efficient to reclaim that heat and utilize that heat to preheat the space. That'll come up a little bit later when we talk about new, new systems. Cost, obviously, the, the boilers, they're, they're oil-fed boilers, so we do have fuel oil, the volatility of fuel oil costs. So the utility bills will go up and down with the fuel oil costs, as well as the inefficiency of the window units. The control of these systems is inefficient, and, and that's why the building automation system for the entire school was recommended for replacement. With better controls, you can have setbacks. You have better controls of outside air when it's zero degrees versus when it's 95 degrees. Um, the gym and cafeteria do not provide cooling, and they do not meet fresh, fresh air requirements right now. And then, as I noted before, the current exhaust systems, there is exhaust fans down the corridor. These exhaust fans pull air from the corridor, which in turn pulls air from the classroom. But again, all of that air goes straight to the environment. There's no energy recapture of the heat within that air, so it's wasted energy. So that's a synopsis of the current systems, how we got to where we are in regards to the recommendations and the systems that would be included within this project. As Joe has had noted, we have gone to bid for this project. We do have the low bidder, which is Airtemp. We have Rodney from Airtemp. So Rodney's gonna introduce his company and go through what we are proposing in regards to the new systems and what would be included within the project. Rodney?
Thanks, Scott. I'm Rodney Rigucci. I'm the Director of Construction with Airtemp Mechanical Services. I've been with the company for over 20 years. We've been in business for 24. It's my family's business. We have a team of over 170 employees, and we specialize in this type of work, VRF, chillers, boilers, duck work. We do all our own fabrication, energy, energy management, plumbing. We're a state task contractor, so we're licensed by the state to do state work, which is a certification level that you can obtain. We specialize in design-build VRF projects like this. When we came on board in the summer, we were able to take a look at this project and, and try to provide the most heating, cooling, and fresh air in the most economical way for the elementary school, and certainly with the chiller as well. As Scott had mentioned, that's an aging piece of equipment and is at the end of its life. Our licenses that we currently have were S1 Unlimited Heating and Cooling Contractor. We're a sheet metal, unlimited sheet metal contractor. We're a Connecticut State Licensed Mechanical Contractor, and we're also a major construction contractor for general construction as well. So, you know, we, we're able to do everything in-house, and we've been able to build that up over the last 24 years. So we're providing a turnkey operation for the system. And that kind of leads me into what's being provided, is a turnkey HVAC and electrical project. And Scott had mentioned a little bit about the type of system that we're proposing to replace the aging system. And we've done a bunch of these school systems throughout Connecticut. It's not uncommon now to see most schools are going to what's called a VRF system. VRF stands for Variable Refrigerant Flow, which is basically a system that provides continuous heating or cooling to each classroom with full control and automation. So at each classroom, the teacher can set temperatures and have parameters set because, and our class might be different from a computer class or a gym environment or a music room. So e- each individual classroom will have its own controls. Scott had hit on the ventilation upgrades. So a couple of years ago, due to COVID, fresh air requirements for the State of Connecticut have changed and require a certain amount of CFM per student within the classrooms. So part of our goal was not only to provide the correct amount of air to each classroom, to provide a clean environment for the children, but also to recover the air that's currently being exhausted out of the building and recover that through what's called an ERV or an Energy Recovery Ventilator. And I'll explain a little bit more as we go in, a little bit further about what that does. We're also including in the scope of work CO2 sensors. CO2 sensors basically are identifying within the room itself. If there's higher levels of CO2, it'll adjust the ERV in the fresh air coming into the space, again, creating a much safer and fresher environment for the kids. You're not getting recirculated air. You're getting fresh air continuously. That actually works. The system designed is based on retrofitting older schools with limited space on floors and ceilings. So in this situation, there is no active basement. There is no active attic to speak of. So equipment is either gonna go on the roof or on the ground and then into recessed drop ceilings. So everything would be hidden where applicable. In addition to that, as part of this renovation, there's 96 unit ventilators as part of this project. We're going to upgrade the electrical services coming into the building to meet the requirements of the new electric that's required. We'll be patching the existing openings, removing the existing unit ventilators. So it's all finished clean, utilize more classroom space for teachers as well. It opens that whole area where there would be a huge unit ventilator the size of this table in the classroom. That all goes away. We will also take care of any of the roofing, the capping, the structural steel, concrete pads. So all of that is part of our proposal and something we will oversee and make sure that gets done 100%. The system that we're proposing is 100% of the heating will be provided to individual classrooms through either wall mounting, wall-mounted or ceiling-suspended fan coil units, and that's what's providing the heat. Scott, again, mentioned the noise levels. These units are all under 35 decibels, which is now the state requirement for classrooms. So not only are we bringing in fresh air and meeting those code requirements, but we're also superseding the current levels, because we'll be below 35 decibels for noise within the classrooms itself, which makes a better learning environment for the children. The proposed cooling, 100% of the cooling will be provided by the same fan coil units. ERVs, we talked a little bit about it, but it will recover wasted heat from exhaust through all new duck work that we will be installing. Each classroom will meet all fresh air requirements and codes. Oil consumption, so cost, a lot of times when we talk about projects like this, questions come up about what are the cost offsets? Well, oil consumption obviously is gonna decrease, and I'm not a person with a crystal ball, so I can't say exactly how much savings that's gonna be. But it's gonna be dramatic because right now, the current heating system is really running freely, and there's no set of active controls that are working, not only individually in the classrooms, but overall throughout the building. And the system that we're gonna be providing will allow for a full control system. Energy cost may increase because, again, we're electrifying the system. We're pulling out an oil-fired system. But electrically, it's a lot more energy efficient than the unit ventilators and many times more efficient than a window air conditioning unit that you currently have. And again, we're recovering a lot of that wasted heat as well. That's right now just being exhausted right out through the roof of the building, through exhaust fans. In addition, for the gymnasium and cafeteria areas, we're gonna replace the existing pieces of equipment with high-efficiency heat pumps. And for the first time, the elementary school will have air conditioning in the gymnasium and in the cafeteria, and will also have the right amount of fresh air requirements, which it currently does not have. So that's the proposed system for the elementary school. The high school is a replacement with some modifications on location and electrical work, but basically, we're going to be replacing the existing old train chiller and replacing that with a Dun &amp; Bush 110-ton air-cooled chiller. We're gonna be providing new pumps that pump the water through the system with what's called VFDs. Those are variable frequency drives, which is, again, is an energy requirement to allow the motors to ramp up and down to meet the needs or the demands. Right now, pumps are either on or they're off. So in, in that, you're using a lot of electricity where variable speed actually ramps down the demand of the electricity needed to maintain those pumps at a lower output. The piping for, from the new chiller to the mechanical room will all be new. And again, I had mentioned, there's some concrete pad work involved with that. There's some bollards that need to be put in. We're relocating an existing shed that's there. And then the control system will also be upgraded to adapt to the new chiller for the school. So that's a little overview of the high school. When we talk about product benefits, and again, I've kind of mentioned them before, but I'll just kind of recap a little bit. The VRF heat recovery system saves money on electricity by utilizing temperatures already present in the building. The VRF system can run heating and cooling simultaneously. What we find in classrooms today is that classrooms, each classroom has an individual demand for heating and cooling, and most teachers and students want more individual control based on how that classroom is being used, so we would be able to provide that. The VRF system provides 100% heating efficiency down to minus 22 degrees outside, so there's no need for any type of supplemental heat. Fresh air that is being brought in from outside is tempered twice before being introduced to the space. Fresh air exceeds the ASHRAE standards, and we talked a little bit about that prior. The new control system offers multiple occupancy options, and the system is a state-of-the-art system where, from your iPhone, you can not only see what each individual classroom is doing, you can control temperature, override those temperatures. You will be notified electronically immediately if a system is down or not working incorrectly. So the amount of downtime that you would have in each classroom or in a school is also being rectified in real time. So that's a night-and-day difference thanks to technology. The VRF cassettes that we would place in the ceilings have directional control, so we're not blowing directly down on students, not creating an uncomfortable environment. We talked about the noise decibel levels being the lowest in the industry. You're also getting a whole new level of air filtration. New standards now call for MERV 13 air filtration, and we're providing that. The work itself would be done during a second shift initially, so we're not disrupting the classroom or the school or the environment at all. We just completed a project recently for another town where we provide the same service. Airtemp is providing a two-year workman, work, workman warranty on all of the work that we do. So anything that happens in the first two years, we will cover. And the manufacturer is offering an eight-year parts warranty on the system. In addition to that, we've also included a five-year service contract, so we'll come in and service the entire system, so it's carefree for you for the next five years. So when we put in systems like this, we, we really want to make sure that the longevity of the system is there. It's not only our reputation, but we understand that with schools and their demands, they can't afford to lose heat in a classroom, and they can't afford it to be so hot that they can't have kids in a classroom as well. So we are providing a maintenance contract to make sure the system is running at its peak efficiency. When we get into the actual equipment of what we would be providing, we talked a little bit about an ERV. This is just kind of a generic slide that shows that air is being pulled back. On the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see polluted, humid air, air that comes from classrooms. Bathrooms is being directly exhausted out of the building. But in that process, as heat is being pulled out, fresh air, 100% outdoor air is being brought in, and it's actually being preheated through a heat exchanger, not in direct, direct contact with that air, but through the heat exchanger, it's preheating that outdoor air. So that not only lowers the energy cost of having to reheat that air, but now it's providing it in a much more efficient way. So that's just a little way, and that's a generic thing. Any ERV is about the same regardless of the make or manufacturer. So, next slide is, when is it time to repair or replace? And, and over the, my 20 years, I wish I had a dime for every time somebody asked me this, whether it's a homeowner or a business owner or a municipal project. And I can tell you that no equipment lasts forever. And typically, a shelf life of equipment is eight to 10 years in our industry. People are able to sometimes stretch that to even 15 to 20 years. But when you do, your cost of repairing equipment and the cost of day-to-day operation really begins to exceed the cost financially of what it would take to replace that equipment. Scott had mentioned part availability. As technology increases every year and parts and pieces change, the availability of certain refrigerants, the availability of certain parts is very, very, has become very, very challenging in our industry. And not only that, but since COVID, production has just now starting to catch up with what we're seeing in the industry as far as product availability. Equipment and controls are, again, are at the end of the useful life, and Scott had mentioned that. The system that we are providing is adapting the 2024 International Codes and the 2025 Building Codes. We're meeting the fate, uh, the, excuse me, the federal and the state requirements for indoor air quality, minimum ventilation, temperature and humidity controls, which is not something that is in place right now, nor can it be put in place with the existing system. The timing coincides with the grant monies for indoor air quality because, again, the ESAR funds that were provided by the federal government are running out, and those, this system needs to be installed and completed by the end of calendar 2025 and committed to by the end of calendar 2024. So I, I know there's a cost component with that as well. And project cost escalation, and I talked a little bit about it generically, but I'll just kind of hit some bullet points. But since COVID, equipment costs have gone up over 12% in 2024 alone. In the last couple of years, due to COVID and supply and demand, we've seen manufacturing costs go up, product availability... we've seen manufacturing costs go up, product availability go down. So raw materials, things like copper sheet metal have gone up five to 10% yearly. Changes in refrigeration. So our country is moving towards more environmentally friendly refrigerants. That's a great thing for the environment, but a bad thing for people who have outdated refrigeration systems in their house or in the in schools or in buildings because refrigeration now is starting to skyrocket older refrigerants. They're not going to be producing those anymore and they want to go to more environmentally friendly systems and that's what this system does have. So you would be ahead of the curve there. Skilled manpower costs are rising in the state of Connecticut. The pool of talented licensed technicians in the state of Connecticut continues to drop overall. So that pool means that the people who are working in our industry are getting more money. So they're happy and and that's just the way it goes with business. Subcontractor pricing has increased as well. The pool of qualified contractors to do this kind of work in the state of Connecticut has also decreased because a lot of the smaller companies during COVID didn't weren't able to make it through that period. So there aren't a lot of state contractors that specialize in this type of work like we do. And then of course, shipping costs, product availability, all continues to be a challenge on these type of projects. And then the financial impact, I'll turn that over, Scott.
Yeah. So basically what we were looking at was a total project allocation of 6.2 million. That's where we'd be at to get both of these projects in a turnkey. Um, that was the awarded contract value for these two projects. So with that, there was a state of Connecticut IAQ grant, indoor air quality grant that the district had received, has received as long as it's executed. Um, and that's about 2.2 million. There's a ever source reimbursement allotment, 158,000. And then for, in order for the grant to be realized, the total town approved amount must be for the project allocation of 6.2. So because this is a reimbursement grant, the district or the town has to allocate the full amount of the project and then get reimbursed. Previously, under the 2023 referendum that was approved, 4.15 million was approved towards the execution of this project. So with that, there's a difference of 2.05 million that's additional that will be need to be approved in order to execute this project to get to the full 6.2. So upon reimbursement from the state and from ever source, the approximate contribution of the town would be 3.8, 3.9 million overall, with the rest of it being paid through grants and reimbursement. So that's where we are from a financial impact of what the project is entailing. Obviously, we went through quite a bit here in regards to existing systems, new systems, how we got here and where we're going to get the elementary school obviously up to a current state as well as getting the chiller replaced at the high school. So does anyone have questions or want to talk about any of the slides that we went over?
Maybe before I do that, I think just one thing that's important to note is that both of these projects are imminent, like the the systems are failing. So it's not like we're upgrading equipment that's usable. You know, Don and his staff are spending a lot of time maintaining them. They're failing. I believe at one point that now that the the air conditioning doesn't work in the auditorium anymore. So these systems are failing and what's why that's important to understand is we've got to fix them. But also that this state grant is not around forever. So if we don't take advantage of dealing with these issues now, we may not qualify for another state grant or there may never be another state grant. You know, Rodney mentioned that Esther funds are going away, so we may lose our opportunity to get grant funding for these. So you understand it's a lot of money, but these are things we're going to be fixing anyway. Going to be dealing with for a long time. I think it's important to take advantage of the state grants while they're available.
Yeah, I think during our presentation to the committee, when we were going through the 14 or 15 items of the entire district, these two items, we were very serious about and we said it wasn't a matter of if, it was when. Because it's to the point where the potential exists that you won't have heating come February 5th. You won't be able to control it. And and cooling, you know, some of the items on our list were cooling related. They were lower down on our priority list because cooling we can get around with, but with the heating and the ability to control heating, you know, that closes schools. So these are the two highest things that were on our list that were imminent failures.
Can I echo that statement? I'm Kira Thompson. I serve on the East Adam Board of Education, on the CIP Capital Improvements and Business and Planning, which is the money and long range for East Adam too. So I think people need to understand too that in essence, when we voted on this earlier, you voted on covering it completely at 4.15 million. But the town's actually having to spend less because we were, we didn't expect the grant, but we got the grant and that small reimbursement from ever source. So in actuality, it's less than what is voted on, but it's just what has to happen. It has, you know, has to be approved again. Basically you're going after it again. And it does cost, like Joe was saying, there's so many costs that maybe you don't see, uh, like having these people, you know, the maintenance staff turn on these machines all the time. The library carpet at the elementary school got ruined from the leaking unit there and like it just costs and costs and costs. So obviously it has to be, has to be done. It's way over overtime. And I don't think people would expect to have your same heating pieces from 1960 something in your house to 2024. It's just reality. And I think it would make the students and staff much happier.
They certainly be more comfortable.
You also don't want to end up in a situation like, I hate to say, region four did and having to close a school for an entire school year. Having John Winthrop closed and they put their seventh and eighth graders in their high school. Because if we don't meet the fresh air requirements, what are we going to do?
Yeah, I think that was one of the items on the why now slide was is that the the requirements are just getting more and more stringent. And more codes are coming into requirement for the beginning of 2025. So doing it now, we're actually ahead of a lot of items that are going to be potential cost increases later due to even more airflow, even more energy, bigger supply, bigger ductwork. Um, it's just getting more and more regulated from the state. And the state has also mandated that all schools now go on a three year cycle where they actually bring an outside firm in. And they do indoor air quality checks and they have to prove to the state that they are meeting ventilation and indoor air quality for a good student environment. So it it's just getting more stringent and, you know, fortunately for the elementary school, we're at a time where we have a project that shovel ready. It just so happens that like Kira said, we need to allocate the additional to get the full grant money. That if we didn't get that grant money, we would have spent the 4.15 to begin with. So we're actually less than that allocation in the end.
So just to be clear with everybody again, right? We have to get the referendum to approve the full total project cost of 6.2 million. But from that, we're then reimbursed by the state about 2.2 million and then about another 160,000 from ever source. So it would only cost the town 3.8 million, which to Kira's point was lower than the already approved referendum amount, but we have to prove the full 6.2 in order to qualify and get.
Do we have audience?
Yeah, I, you said 2023 is when they came up with the first vote. Then a year, maybe a year and a half and you're 30% higher. We're going to be asking for money. I don't have any problem with asking for the additional. That's pretty much how things work. What's keeping this from being a little off next year when this is supposed to finish up? And then we need to come up with more money. Anything on your end that's guaranteed that's not going to happen?
Yeah, yeah. So what we did is we went through the bid process. It was an open RFP process. We brought in, there was four or five contractors. So there's been a full bid process that's already committed. The only thing we're waiting on is a referendum approval where we can provide that contract to Air Town as they were the low bidder. And that number will be solid through the entire process of the project.
Okay, and for whatever reasons it wasn't available, do you do to do to do it the first time?
Well, no, because we we hadn't bid. The project had not been bid. So there was no grant monies when the first, when we started the first, uh, basically we had the first submission, if you will, of the programming narratives.
Why would the grant money make any difference if if the bottom line is the bill and it has to be paid? The grant money is nice, but that doesn't explain why the quote was 30% off.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I apologize for one second? Keep going. So the original cost estimate was done back in December of 22. So it wasn't done when we got the referendum. It was done almost a full year before that.
No, I'm just looking at the overall.
Yeah, no, we, I think we were all a little alarmed at the increase in cost, but it has been, right? It's not just been since the referendum passed. It's been since December 2022. We didn't want to go for, we found out fairly soon after, well, within a few months after getting the uh, after here, we didn't get the grant, uh, or after getting the initial cost estimate that we didn't get the grant. We had some indication, I think it's fair to say, a lot of indication that the state would do a second round. So when they initially released, I think it was targeted for.
150 million was the original release point for phase one, but they had only released like 60 to 70 million.
So we thought there'd be another.
So then they they were hinting that their round two is going to be coming for the next fiscal year. And then so the project wasn't bid and it was finishing documents, getting it to the construction document phase. And then the next round was announced and that's when every everyone put in for that next round. And then this last May, it was actually announced that we had received the grant for these two projects for that amount. So one thing, you know, just, you know, we've touched on a little bit, but I did reach out to contractors in regards to escalation and on two projects that we had bid about a year apart. And they had noted that the same piece of equipment that was on that project that was on this project had gone up 73% for the same piece of equipment. And that was the bid numbers that they were receiving. So the escalation, yeah, definitely not where we wanted to be. Part of the estimating process, the estimator carries a escalation and they carry a midpoint to construction number based on perceived where we're going to be. But obviously, you know, no one included enough. And it came in significantly high. Wouldn't actually bid two contractors.
Any questions?
Anything come through email?
Did they come over? No.
People are watching. It's on the Board of Ed.
Did you get emails?
It's running live on the Board of Ed 10, 9.
Okay, great.
So I switched the links over.
So do you have any questions coming in on your end, Cindy?
No, I have not received anything on my end.
Anything additional that Board of Ed or facilities or anybody else wants to share?
We appreciate this opportunity. We were all very disappointed to find out the escalated costs, so it's important for the public to know why we're here.
Thank you, Dr. Burrito. Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming and venting what we have.
Looking forward to the the project.
Oh, right. Okay.
Uh, we do another item.
One more item.
We do. I'm just going to take it up.
Yes. Is that a vote? Okay. So also, uh, uh, for referendum, if it goes that far, is additional funding necessary for the athletic complex, which is completed? As most people know, in town, the Nathan Hale High School Track and Field Athletic Complex was completed on April 18th, 2024. Some key components of that project, we constructed a six lane oval track with eight front lanes. We constructed a field surface for the field activities for track, javelin, discus and other track events. We replaced the removal of the soccer field and installed a synthetic turf soccer field, which as most people in town know, solved, completely solved our drainage and watering issues at the soccer field. We constructed bathrooms, which I'm hearing are very, very, very popular. And we brought the athletic field and track now too, up to ADA compliance. We were, the total project cost was approved at 2.8 million dollars. We received from the state of Connecticut, 1.4 million. Those funds were approved and actually paid in August 24, so we actually received those funds. Similar to the HVAC project, we had to pay for the track and then get reimbursed. Additionally, we had funds from the Purple Fund of $400,000 that further offset the town's cost. And the full referendum was approved originally at, as of May 24th, 2022, and I would say overwhelmingly. The actual project came in over budget, technically by 144,000 dollars. But we actually had 20,000 dollars remaining from our design base that we believe will offset that. So we think the referendum will show 124,000 dollars about.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the bond council to approve that we can do that because the board, um, the Purple Fund actually gave us 500,000 dollars total to the project. But the first 100,000 dollars was used in the design construction phase, which we came in under budget by just under 20,000 dollars. So, but since the Purple Fund's total 500,000 dollars was meant to be for the entire project, we just have to kind of work the wording out between the Director of Finance for the town and our bond council, but I think the total will end up being closer to 124,000 over budget total.
And reasons we are over budget, we're unforeseen things. I want to make it very clear that the project is completed. These things have been addressed. They were addressed during construction. Our committee and board management did not just go ahead and approve these things to happen. So all of these were.
Change orders.
Change orders. All the change orders were reviewed by the committee, approved by the committee and presented to the Board of Finance. So our committee and the Board of Ed did not just go ahead and accept these things. So everything was approved, but it does mean that we were over budget technically versus what were approved back in May of 22. Those items that we, that contributed to that was some additional tree work that had to be done. The biggest cost item which people may have heard about was as we were replacing the soccer field, I think right near where the drainage issues were, the contractor found that it was a stump and debris dump from the construction of the high school back in 1994. So over time, those stumps and other debris were rotting away and causing issues. So as we were preparing, excavating for the new synthetic field, the contractor noticed that that cost almost 84,000 dollars, which was actually under budget. We thought it was going to be more like 100,000 and we came under budget on that. So we came in under budget, being over budget. We did have to address some sewer issues to modernize the planning for the bathrooms that are on site now. That was about 22,000 dollars. Additionally, we had some tree removal and stump removal work because we relocated this, the scoreboard, which if anybody's seen where it is, it's beautiful. That was about almost 10,000 dollars, 9,800 dollars. And then some additional electrical and other engineering items were about 25,000 dollars. I think some of that was ADA related too.
A lot of that was ADA related. Some of it was to prepare for. Some of it was to prepare for wiring under the field so that there can be additional work later and additional scoreboards if ever the town wants to do additional work over there. It would save from having to pull up the turf field and move things around.
So again, that's, we believe we'll say $124,000 on the referendum due to the extra $20,000 that we have from the design phase. That's what that's all, that's what that component of the referendum will be about.
Any questions about that item?
Thank you, Joe.
All right, well, thank you. This concludes the public hearing. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please feel free to submit them to both the Board of Ed and/or the Selectmen's Office at admin@eastaddam.org. And thank you, and have a good night.
Thanks for coming.